All right, good morning again, welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, and it is ten a.m. All members of the court are present, and this meeting is called to order. If everyone will please rise for the invitation delivered by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear heaven and Father, we come before you today, and Lord, we are grateful and thankful for life. Father, we pray for wisdom, Lord, as we make decisions today on behalf of our citizens. Lord, we lift up our first responders, and Father, we pray that you would protect those who protect us. Lord, we lift up Jamaica today, Lord, as they get hit by this level-five hurricane, and, Lord, we just pray that you would spare life. Father, we pray you'd help the churches in that area, and, Father, that you'd help all recovery matters. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is to consider and possibly approve amendments of the October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting and the October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five special meeting as presented by the Honorable Connie Beckman, County Clerk. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, consider approval of request by the Honorable Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, to cancel all registered claims from October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and approval of today's cash statement as presented. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of two million, six hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars and ninety-five cents. On our cash report summary and general checking, we have seven hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. First Financial Bank General Checking Special Money Market, nineteen million, eight hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents. And Tech School General, three hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred ten dollars and sixty-nine cents. For a total of cash funds of twenty million, nine hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred five dollars and fourteen cents. Thank you, service.
Okay. Have motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Candace McKinnon, County Auditor. Good morning.
Good morning. Grapefruit expenditures for October the fifteenth through the sixteenth were one million, nine hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Grapefruit expenditures for October the twentieth through the twenty-third were one hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and three cents. Expenditures for today, October twenty-eighth, are four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, thirteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. The total expenditures and transfers are two million, five hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Gross payroll for the, for October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, was six hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and eight cents. The total transfer for that payroll was one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and fifty-four cents.
Please pass the bill.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. McKinnon. Number six is consider approval of request by the Honorable Matthew Minnick, County Attorney, to authorize the county judge to execute a three-year contract renewal order form with Microtech for the hot docs program, which is utilized for the creation of CPS documents and aids in the prosecution of CPS cases. If approved, the subscription fee over the next three-year period will be one thousand, one hundred ninety dollars for twenty-twenty-five, one thousand, three hundred nine dollars for twenty-twenty-six, and one thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents for twenty-twenty-seven. Mr. Minnick, is this amount budgeted for, uh, this year? Is there nothing to budget to pay the eleven ninety?
That's correct, yes, it's eleven ninety for this year.
And, uh, you informed me that you beat them up pretty good over this, you shot this around, this is the best price you could get?
Yes, we've been fighting for about three months over this.
Thank you very much. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number seven is to consider approval of request by the Honorable Matthew Minnick, County Attorney, to amend the current Harden County game room regulations adopted by Commissioners Court on March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, to include additional language based on, on the Court of Appeals in Fort Worth, Texas, and the city of Fort Worth, and David Cook, in his official capacity as the Fort Worth City Manager versus Stephanie Lynn Riley, Texas C and D Amusements Incorporated, and Brian and Lisa Schott, DBATSCA, and DBA River Bottom Pub, Court of Appeals, Second Appellate District of Texas, number zero-two dash zero, I'm sorry, one-seven dash zero-zero-one-eight-five dash C V. We had a public hearing at nine-thirty a.m. I think most of the people that are here were here for the public hearing. Uh, the sheriff, uh, spoke about the reason to amend the game room resolution, regulations, and then Mr. Minnick spoke briefly about the legal reasons, uh, for the amended regulations. Um, I'd be glad to pull that back up on the screen real quick here. Give me just a moment to do that. Basically, we have game room regulations that were adopted by Commissioners Court on March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the sheriff and county attorney have worked hard over the past few weeks to amend those, adding these two paragraphs here that are highlighted. This talks about, uh, case law, and, uh, basically just tightens the regulations a little bit more to make sure that the sheriff has the authority to, uh, regulate the game rooms as allowed by law. Again, uh, he spoke about that. I think everybody in here, uh, that wanted to hear about this probably heard that, so I'm not going to ask him to speak again about it. But if anybody would like to say one thing, anything one way or the other, we did have two members of the public that spoke during the public hearing. They were both against having game rooms in Harden County. The, uh, county attorney spoke about the fact that Commissioners Court does not have the authority to ban game rooms altogether, but we do have the authority to regulate them, and that's what this amendment does, is regulate them a little further than we do already. If anybody would like to speak, I'd be glad to allow you to do so. If not, we'll move forward and take action. If anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Move to him, ma'am.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Young, to adopt the amended regulations which are going to affect today. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff, and Captain Custer, and Mr. Minnick, for, uh, doing all the work you've done to make sure that we're in compliance with the law. And thank you for everyone who showed up today to, uh, hear the discussion and to, uh, to be a part of this. Thank you. And I don't want to forget, we have, uh, three police chiefs here. Chief Williford from Coombs, Chief Sullins from Lumberton, and Chief Purderson from Saralee. Also have, uh, a member of the, uh, city of Salisbury here today, Mr. Martin. Thank y'all for being here today as well, I think y'all were here for this. If you want to stay, we want you to, and if you want to leave, we understand that too. Thank y'all very much. Item number eight is to consider adoption of Resolution thirty-two dash twenty-five, certifying that the county has made a grant to Nutrition and Services for Seniors, an organization that provides home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly and/or who have a disability, and certifying that the county is an approved organization of accounting system as requested by Mr. Jancy Kimball, CEO of Nutrition and Services for Seniors. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, consider approval of request by District Judges of Harden County, Texas, to adopt the jury selection plan of Harden County pursuant to section sixty-two point zero-one-one of the government code, these are procedures for the selection of names of persons for jury service. Have motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, consider request by Mrs. Laura Wines, Lawyer of Oregon, for County Justice to sign correctional facility contract renewal with Thompson Reuters, West Publishing Corporation for inmate access to Westlaw, a year in total of eight thousand, three fifty-four seventy-six, which is an increase of eight ninety-five oh eight per year. Now, before we, uh, do this, uh, the sheriff called last week and said this was no longer needed because, uh, they have a plan in place or a program in place that already provides, uh, the same services that this applies, uh, provides, and so I asked Mrs. Wines to reach out to, uh, this, uh, who is it?
It's Thompson Reuters.
Thompson Reuters, and just cancel the contract. Did you get that done?
Yes, sir.
So I would recommend that we, uh, not take any action on item ten, and that's a savings of eighty-three fifty-four seventy-six per year. Thank you, Sheriff. No action? Just recommending no action, we'll just pass it. Is that okay with the court? All right, we'll pass item number ten, and that will go away. Number eleven, discussion and possible action concerning appointments to the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District Board of Directors, as follows. Item number A is the reappointment of Mr. Olin Bean as the Presiding Officer, Board President, to serve a new three-year term effective January first, twenty-twenty-six. That term will end on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. Item B is the reappointment of Mr. Bobby Rogers as Director to serve the, a new three-year term effective January first, twenty-twenty-six, ending on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? Thank you very much for serving, Mr. Martin. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider approval of request by Mrs. Misty Sims, person engaged, to approve acceptance proceeds in amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents for the total loss of the twenty-twenty-three Chevrolet Tahoe, VIN number ending in zero-six-seven-two, and remove that vehicle from the inventory. Motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids for the GLO CDVG-dash-MIT-dash-MOD Salisbury roadside ditch and channel improvement projects, GLO contract number twenty-four dash zero-six-five dash zero-six-five dash E-five-ninety-six, located in precinct one. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to sell surplus equipment, furniture, and other miscellaneous items as needed during the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, utilizing the Rene Bates Auctioneers Incorporated at ReneBates.com. Motion by Commissioner Cook, second by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fifteen, present recommendation from the Evaluation Committee for Engineering Services pertaining to the Community Development Block, Disaster Recovery Local Communities Program. Funding from the Texas General Land Office under the twenty-twenty-four disasters, ER forty-seven eighty-one, Texas Severe Storms, and ER forty-seven ninety-eight Hurricane Barrel, and possibly award to successful firm. Mrs. Sims?
Qualification statements were, um, opened on October tenth, twenty-twenty-five, at two p.m. in the Purchasing Department. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Pat Boyett were present. We received, um, qualification statements from the following. Sean Bergen-Hulk, Fitz and Shipman, Levens Engineering and Design, Sigma Engineers, and Arsenio Wilson &amp; Cole. Evaluation committee was Commissioner Cook, Aaron Tepper, and Clay Woodward, and they proposed that we award a number one and number two. Number one was Levens Engineering, and number two, Sean Bergen-Hulk.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young to accept the recommendation of the committee, and second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? And thank everybody for serving on that committee. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Sixteen is to present recommendation from the Evaluation Committee for Grant Administration Service for this same grant project, but this is to award a, uh, grant administrator for that program. Mrs. Sims?
Proposals were open on October tenth, I'm sorry, October tenth, twenty-twenty-five, at two p.m. in the Purchasing Department. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Pat Boyett were present. We received proposals from Griffith, Griffith Mosley Johnson &amp; Associates, Trailer &amp; Associates, and Public Management. This was the same evaluation committee, Commissioner Cook, Aaron Tepper, and Clay Woodward. Um, they're recommending Trailer &amp; Associates number one, and number two, Public Management.
Motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Cooper, to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee, and thank y'all once again for serving. Any discussion? Commissioner?
Judge, how many, um, projects is Trailer &amp; Associates representing this?
I would say, uh, almost all of them, except for Public Management as our other grant administrator on a few of them, including the, uh, mitigation, which is a large project.
And Dave Law function very well.
Yes, sir, we made great luck out of both of them. Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seventeen is Phil Misty Sims. Consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to present results of bids received for GLO CDVG-MIT, Gore Store Road Channel Crossing and Roadway Improvements. Contract number zero, I'm sorry, two-four, dash zero-six-five, dash zero-six-five, dash E-five-ninety-six, located in precinct two, and possibly award to successful vendor.
Proposals were open on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at two p.m. Levens Engineering is here as well as several of the vendors. Um, the bidders were bidding as follows. MK Construction, one million, eight hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars. C Most, one million, nine hundred thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents.
Mrs. Sims? On MK Constructors, did you include the total bid?
Yes, sir.
Did I mishear it?
One million, eight hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Texas Materials, is that?
Texas Materials, one million, nine hundred sixty-three thousand dol, nine hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Mason Construction, two million, twenty thousand, eight hundred, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Alco, two million, four hundred forty-three thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And MB Western, two million, five hundred and three thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy cents.
Quick to go a little bit.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Young, to go with the low bid, which is MK Constructors, at one million, eight hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars. You might have said that the first time, but I was looking at the basic bid, so that's what I heard you say, but you might have said it right, I apologize. Any other discussion?
Judge, just for the record, uh, MK, uh, Constructors is the one who did the first part of Gore Store, they did an excellent job, and, uh, so I look forward to this to be a very speedy project, and just get it done in time and at a good deal.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. That's all for you, thank you. Number eighteen is consider approval of request by Sheriff Mark Davis to sell public auction, to sell by public auction certain real property located at forty-eight sixty-five Covey Lane. Legal description is S zero-three-nine-seven-five, Quell Hollow, Lot thirty-three, Acres one point three-seven. This property was awarded to the Harden County Sheriff's Office pursuant to a judgment of forfeiture, number five-five-six-eight-eight, and the Eighty-Eighth District Court of Harden County, Texas. Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Didn't need to sell it, right?
We just need to sell it, yeah, we've got it, uh, it's officially owned by Harden County, and been awarded, and we plan to, uh, if approved today, to go to the December, I'll include it, advertise it, include it in on the December tax sale that I'm already gonna have. It's gonna generate plenty of bidders and folks with money, and so we're excited that we'll get the best exposure we can if we have it prepared and we're ready to sell to, to a bidder. There's some stipulations that come off the top of that. There's some back taxes to be owed, so the sale of that will arrange for the payment of about eight thousand dollars in back taxes coming back to the county. So, uh, we're gonna actually have a win-win in a couple of different ways if we can get rid of it.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion?
What kind of forfeiture was it?
It was a drug investigation forfeiture. It's actually several years old. Uh, it's been tied up quite a while because of the death of some of the participants. And finally, uh, hats off, big thanks to the District Attorney's Office and Ms. Walton. She's worked really hard bringing folks from all over the state of Texas together to try to get everybody on the same page. It took us a while, but we got it done, and thanks to her.
Thank you, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nineteen, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis for permission to sell two surplus vehicles and a fixed equipment to the city of Phoenix, described as a two thousand twenty-one Chevrolet Tahoe PPV, VIN number ending in three-zero-five-nine, in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars, and a two thousand twenty-one Chevrolet, Chevrolet Tahoe PPV, VIN number ending in seventy-four-ninety, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Motion by Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty, excuse me, consider approval of request by the sheriff for permission to donate to the city of Phoenix Police Department for long enforcement use. Certain sheriff's office surplus property described as ten Exxon brand conducted energy devices, serial numbers ending in six-three-eight, seven-five-zero, seven-seven-seven, eight-seven-five, eight-seven-nine, eight-eight-six, nine-oh-two, nine-oh-four, nine-fifteen, and nine-fifty-nine. These items have been replaced with current year model devices. Have motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Cook, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cook?
What are these?
Tasers.
Okay. Well, I couldn't figure out what, what they were talking about as far as the energy devices, but it's a taser.
You should know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should.
Any other discussion?
Just never heard it called that.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-one, consider approval of request by the sheriff to sell the following vehicles utilizing Rene Bates Auctioneers Incorporated at ReneBates.com. A two thousand seventeen Ford F-one-fifty, VIN number ending in seven-seven-four-five. A two thousand seventeen Ford F-one-fifty, VIN number ending in seven-seven-four-two. Two thousand eighteen Chevrolet Tahoe PPV, VIN number ending in four-zero-two-four. A two thousand twelve Ford F-one-fifty, VIN number ending in five-six-six-one. A two thousand twenty-one Chevrolet Tahoe PPV, VIN number ending in thirteen-oh-one. And a two thousand eighteen Ford F-one-fifty, VIN number ending in eight-six-three-seven. Second. By Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Cook, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
Sheriff, have, I can't remember, I know we re, we use Rene Bates all the time, and I currently have two vehicles, uh, that's in the process of going through an auction. Have you used them before on regular?
I have not, not, not since I've been in office, uh, and I've worked with Misty to explore. We think we making be better off financially selling through them than trading in, and we base that on some research we did on what similar vehicles were bringing on Rene Bates, and we were really impressed with, with the dollar amount. My staff worked pretty hard to try to do a comparison, and we went back and looked at what we were historically getting in trade value, and we looked at what Rene Bates, you know, had been producing in the last twelve months, and, quite frankly, it was almost double. And so, we agreed to, hey, let's take a shot, let's try it one time and see if it works, and Misty was good. She helped us kind of navigate that and, and get it rolling.
I'm interested to see the results.
Yeah, I am, I am too, but what we're seeing in the last twelve months, that's really, uh, even, even with a little bit of a fee that you pay to have them do, do that, I, I think it's a win-win, I think we're good there because, uh, the numbers I'm seeing are definitely more than what we were getting wholesale when we traded it in.
Yeah, thank you.
And Sheriff, the money you get from these, we'd take it and use it for purchases on new vehicles? I just like to do it on a freight.
Yeah, we, we generally would, I'll come back to you after the end of that and ask. Yeah, and ask maybe that we replenish that vehicle purchase line item, um, but we'll see where we are first.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank y'all.
Number twenty-two, discussion and possible action to amend the current longevity pay policy as requested by Mrs. Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director. Hang on just a minute, we got Chief Williford. Yes, sir.
I would, uh, express my appreciation to the court for the sale of vehicles and the donation of the surplus property, and certainly to the sheriff, who we have a great working relationship with, and we, we thank you, all, all of you, very, very much.
Well, I'll just speak on behalf of the court, and of course, they can say what they want, but we're glad to do it. Hope you got a good deal on those Tahos, it looks like you probably did, and I hope they serve you for years to come, and, and glad to see you get them, and we're glad to do that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Harrington, longevity pay policy.
Yes, sir. Um, I am proposing to remove the wording must be in paid status for the entire pay period. Um, this can be an issue when processing, processing and auditing payroll, as it has to be removed, then added back each time an employee goes unpaid, and then, uh, in paid again status. Um, that is the first change that I am, um, requesting or recommending. Um, the second one is that we pay longevity in one month same, uh, one month sum payment. One thing that I, uh, did not think of whenever I amended the policy was that the employee must be actively employed at the time of the month sum payment. In other words, if we decide to pay the one month sum payment, say in December, the employee must be, um, actively employed at that time, not employed in November and terminate, and we have to go back and pay the employee. So I would like to add that into the policy.
If the court, uh, accepts, uh, your recommendation, who, who would make the decision on when that's paid?
It would be up to Commissioners Court each year. So I would, um, I'm assuming it would be me that would come back and request the date. And if it is agreed upon today to make the payment in one month sum, I have a, uh, recommended date by the Treasurer and the Auditor, we all got together and discussed it. So, if that is the pleasure of the court, then I would like to, um, also recommend that it be distributed on November the nineteenth. And if it, if approved, um, we will not pay any longevity after Thursday, the thirtieth, because we've already initiated payroll, so moving forward, we will not get, um, we will not have longevity on our checks. When is our next payday, the thirteenth? I didn't write that down, I'm sorry.
So today, tomorrow, this Thursday's paychecks would have it, but any further ones wouldn't until this comes out, right?
Correct.
And any paid to date would come out of that month sum, is that right?
Correct.
And would that be for the fiscal pay period? Would that carry them all the way through September?
We're actually paying them for the time they worked last fiscal year when we do this, is that right? The way longevity pay works? So you're paying them now for their working that they did, the work that they, uh, conducted or performed during the previous fiscal year?
Right, so what the payment on the nineteenth would be, is it would be the longevity for the year minus the two payments that have already been made, for the, well, the thirtieth would be one, and then, uh, fifteenth, sixteenth.
Let me amend. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to amend the policy as presented, along with the additional language about that, uh, the employee must be, uh, actively on the payroll at the time the check is paid. Is that the way that's gonna be worded?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Minnick, you'll make sure it's worded correctly?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna also add the date that y'all, I mean.
And the date would be November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five? Yes. Is that an actual payday, or are y'all doing a special payroll just for longevity pay?
That would be a special payroll, so you would just, everyone would get an extra check with just the longevity paid.
On that day?
So we'll.
I'm motion. Okay, got it? And the second was by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? Is there any elected official or department head here that would like to speak about this? Have any questions about this, or any concerns, anybody at all?
I would like to say thank you for doing it too, because it'll help with the payroll process, like we were doing it currently, of having to take people on, put people back, that way we can stop all that. And it's just, I think it'll benefit, benefit to the employees to do it each year, maybe around the holidays, would be helpful.
Thank you very much.
I agree, I think this is a benefit to the employees to have it in one month sum, right before the holidays.
Mr. Darrell, you want to speak?
Well, just a quick clarification.
Sure.
I, uh, handicapped, I can't hear real well. Um, I was, just a clarification, the, she said the employee must be actively employed. Is this payment for work they had done previously?
It's longevity pay for the previous fiscal year. Yes, sir.
Well, if they've earned it, uh, and they do leave, why wouldn't you still give it to them? That's my question.
Because it is for years of service, and so we like to give it to our employees to keep them employed. Is basically what it is. It's not for work performed, or, um, hours of work, or the performance of work. It's their dedication to the county.
Well, they were dedicated back then.
Yes, sir, but once they're, once they're gone, they're off the payroll, and it's hard to pay somebody a payroll check once they're not on the payroll anymore, so that was a discussion.
That helps.
Sir, any other comments? Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Including Matt. Thank you. Number twenty-three, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to execute the Southeast Texas Auto Theft Task Force under local agreement twenty-twenty-six, grant year, buy-in between the city of Omaha, city of Port Arthur, Jefferson County, Harden County, Jasper County, and Orange County, as a covered area party of the combined task force. Sheriff, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? The only thing I would say is we're not changing anything, we're just a covered area, we don't have anybody participating.
That is, that is correct, yeah, they just, their grant, their grant qualifications require them to get buy-in from the other jurisdictions, that they're okay to operate here if they need to, and that we recognize what they're doing and support that, that, that's it.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-five, consider approval of request by the Honorable Connie Beckman, County Clerk, to publish citations by publication only on the Office of Court Administration Public Information Internet Website pursuant to section seventy-two point zero-three-four-eight-two of the government code, which permits a person to publish a citation or notice only on the public information internet website if the total cost of the required publication exceeds the greater of two hundred dollars each week, or the amount set by the Supreme Court under subsection B. Mrs. Beckman?
What this is, is when, um, an attorney files a probate that with the determination of bearship, we have to post in the sales fee B, and their client pays for that. Well, it's been being sixty dollars, I think they said, well, now it's went up to over three hundred dollars. The probate is already high in itself, and so that person that is mourning and grieving, I feel like they've told us at conference before, we could just post on OCA website. And that's what I'm, I wanted to. And that's what I'm, I wanna do.
Salute. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying by Commissioner Young. Mrs. Beckton, I think, don't you also post this on your website?
Well, it's posted out on the board.
Under your posting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's, uh, published locally and on the O C A's website after the day?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I'm gonna go back to number twenty-four. I skipped that. I thought I'd already done it, but I didn't. It is to consider and possibly authorize the county judge to execute the Southeast Texas Auto Theft Task Force Interlocal Agreement fiscal year twenty twenty-four Senate Bill two two four grant binding between the city of Omaha, city of Port Arthur, Jefferson County, Harden County, Jasper County, Orange County as a covered area party of the combined task force.
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Thank you, Commissioner Kirkendall. The, uh, email, Mrs. Wines, that's attached to our agenda for this says it's a S B twenty-two twenty-four catalytic converter grant. But the agenda says it is a Auto Theft Task Force grant. Laura?
Uh, that's, it, it's related to Senate Bill two two four. It's the same thing.
All right. You good?
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? Was there a motion? And seconded. Commissioner Kirkendall pointed out to me, I skipped it, so thank you.
Yeah.
And we're good that we're adopting the right thing that's on the agenda, correct? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-six, is discussion concerning the ongoing federal government shutdown that began on October first, twenty twenty-five and is still ongoing. And its effects on grant-related projects and grant funded positions and possible action by the court as it means necessary. We have some letters in our packets here. Uh, the latest one is dated, uh, October twenty-third. Uh, Ms. Whitley sent this to me yesterday. This does, uh, show that the, uh, Department of State Health Services is guaranteeing payment through November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And if the shutdown is continued, uh, on or beyond that date, they will reevaluate the situation. So, uh, we have that from, uh, for health services. It also, there's also another letter in here, I believe, or maybe it's an email uh, from the State Health Services. It also talks about the WIC program being funded through the month of November, I believe. Is that correct? And to continue business as usual. To my knowledge, those are the only grants that are affected by the shutdown. Uh, we are still waiting to hear from also the governor on one of the grants for the, uh, there she is, Crime Victims Assistance Center. I have an email from Ms. England with the governor's office, uh, yesterday morning that says just hang tight. They are still working on it and we are going to receive that award. And if the government shutdown has nothing to do with it, it has to do with the number of grant awards that they're working on. Uh, the executive staff and the governor's office is still reviewing those and once they finalize those reviews, we'll get those awards. So, uh, that is the status as of today regarding the, the way that the government shutdown is affecting our grants. Uh, they are, uh, gonna continue to pay us through November fifteenth. And as we get close to November fifteenth, if those, uh, in power at Washington are still on vacation, I guess we'll see what the state says at that time about whether or not they're gonna continue to, uh, to pay the county bill. Uh, any, any, uh, comments or concerns? Commissioner Cooper?
A quick question and I don't know if I can, uh, word it correctly, but I guess it would be to Candace. So you give your report every time we have court. Ms., uh, the treasurer, uh, Ms. McWilliams, she gives her report every time telling us how many, how much money we have, what bills we sending on. So we do payroll. All the, all the grant, uh, money that, that we use on payroll is included in your report for payroll, six hundred and eighty thousand, whatever it might be. Which one of y'all, uh, incorporate a recovery in your report? When, when, when we get reimbursed from these grants, where, where is that noted at in y'all's reports?
Well, my report shows the cash, actual cash in the bank accounts. So it would be in that total and general checking. Hers would have more of the breakdown, but her report doesn't show the.
My report reflects the expenses.
I, I would just.
My report reflects the expenses that have been paid out, um, including grant payouts.
Right, on payroll.
The, the money coming in, cash would be reflected in the cash balances that she's reporting. And we also have those accounted for separately, um, if you, if you would like to see those. We do have that. Um, as far as the money coming in is reflected in the revenue accounts of those funds.
So as, as a, as a commissioner and I'm speaking for myself, nobody else. In the past, I've just always taken for granted that we're getting reimbursed. That's good, you know, everything. But right now, the way things are, I would like to know when we're reimbursed personally. I would like to know that.
We submit reimbursement. Uh, we try to do that monthly.
Yes.
Um, and so it's pretty regular payments come in.
We're pretty current.
We're current right now, uh, as a matter of fact, we just, right now, September, because September closed and we're trying to close out the year. Um, there are some pending payments for September, but we are working on getting those.
So y'all keep us up to date on everything with your reports and I appreciate that. Where's, and I might need to get with you later to find this out. Where specifically can I find, when I'm looking at these reports, can I find that we have been reimbursed for these grants?
Uh, that will have to be a separate report that I provide to you.
We would have to do a breakdown report.
Thank you.
Cause I give you just to generalize. And also my reports, when I say the, uh, release of liability, that's the money that's already gone out the door. That's the money that was approved and by last court, that's mailed out, taken care of. It's, it's the money gone out. Cause our numbers were pretty similar today, but her number is my next
Release.
amount that's coming. And then my cash report is current up until we have court and then I'll have to go move all the money you just approved. So that's a number before the money you spent today and the payroll that's coming this week.
The, these reports that Sharon provided to the judge and to us about, uh, were paid through November or November fifteenth or whatever, that's, that's something that is beneficial as well. I li- I like to see that, but
They're promising.
I guess what I'm getting at is how long can the court pay a grant without being reimbursed before it starts affecting us? That, that's, that's the bottom line is one.
Yeah, so, so right now, um, I mean, expenses vary, you know, month to month for the grants.
Right.
But, um, for example, August, if you take out of the consideration, the grants that are related to the disasters and the special projects, they have about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in expenses. Um, and all of that, if I recall properly, correctly, has been reimbursed. So right now, we just have a, and we've gotten reimbursed for some of September expenses. We just have some that's outstanding.
And, I mean, I, I guess I'm the one that would bring it up on the court. You probably, no, the judge probably doesn't even want to even think about this, but if, if we had to furlough anybody or, or, God forbid, hopefully everything's gonna get taken careful. We'd have to do that. We're gonna pay unemployment. The grants not paying unemployment, I assume.
I don't think so. I don't know.
That's correct. We would, we'd have to pay it if it's not paid by the grant.
So a furloughed employee, if they receive a paycheck after the shutdown is over, then they have to reimburse for that furlough. So would we be reimbursed for money we've already paid for unemployment? You know? No.
Okay, I was going to say no. I don't think the grants cover that, but.
I would just like to add, uh, kind of taping on to Commissioner Cooper's discussion that, uh, all grants. Anytime that, uh, a rent payee is behind on paying us, I get a call from Candace or Angie or Debbie or somebody will let me know and I get involved and try to make sure we get that money. I have never had to get involved on any of the D S H S grants or the money from the state that we get for probation or juvenile probation. They usually pay those like clockwork. These letters are just telling us that they are, uh, gonna promise to continue paying us for all work up through November fifteenth. We've got another meeting November twelfth. I'm hoping the shutdown's over by then and we just keep going. If it's not, I've told Sharon I need another letter by then that says one way or the other. Either, hey, we're gonna continue to pay you or this ends November fifteenth. If it ends November fifteenth, then we kind of have a decision to make on what we're gonna do. I'll just tell you that from everything I've seen, and I would talk to Laney Brown once again to get an update on this. Laney represents, uh, works for Congressman Baden. If I got, uh, word from her that once the government shutdown was over and they went back in that we would get that money, I would bring that to the court and let you know and that would help us on our decision. But of course, if we couldn't get that promise, then we got a tough decision to make next time around. But feel good about it right now. I don't have any qualms about the grant that we don't have yet from the Office of the Governor for victims of crime. Uh, it's never been this late before, so I was worried, but, uh, someone in charge there named Hillary Ewen has been very, uh, in contact with me at least every other day, giving me updates on that. And I feel much better. I talked to her two or three times on the phone. It's just a matter of, uh, they're behind, so. But the federal shutdown has nothing to do with that. If anybody wants to add anything, please do. Mr. Darrell?
I'm here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I just wanted to comment that if the, if the shutdown continues, I have some friends that have, uh, children in the military. And the military, what I understand is going to be, continue to be paid out of another bucket somehow. They'll be paid to continue their salary and then when the government gets back going, they will, they will reimburse that bucket of funds or they'll reimburse, I don't know how it work. But that, it'll be like a loan. They're doing like a loan to these soldiers, military. And then that loan will be repaid when the government gets going again and catches up. I just say that to give you an option, an idea to be thinking about in case we get there and we're still running along without, without funding.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Any other comments? Any concerns? And move on to that last item.
Judge? I know the twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yes, ma'am.
Yes, that is the correct name of the interlocal agreement, but it is fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay.
Wanna go back to that? Instead of twenty-four, it says fiscal twenty.
Who made the motion on that?
Me.
Commissioner Cook?
Yeah.
Do you second it?
I believe I did.
Cooper?
Cooper.
Yes, sir.
All right. So we're gonna amend item number twenty-four to say fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Commissioner Cook, would you make that part of your motion? Or corrected motion, I guess?
Yeah.
And, uh, Commissioner Cooper, do you still second that?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Did a little copy and paste in there, didn't you?
Yeah, I did.
All right. All in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, any opposed? Motion passes again. Is there any other discussion items? I did skip that one again. Anybody have any discussion items? We have, uh, election going on, early voting's going on in the county court room, constitutional amendments. There's a, uh, those are all important, of course, but there's a couple of really important ones about property taxes. So if you hadn't noted already, make sure you do so. If you miss early voting, uh, the election will happen next Tuesday and it'll be consolidated, uh, voting locations. You can go to the elections department website and she's got that posted on there where all of the, uh, voting locations will be on Tuesday. Any other discussion items? That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saying by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.